Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the regular school committee. And today is Thursday, June 27th. If everyone can please rise and say "Appetite Legion's to the flag."
[Applause]
"Appetite Legion's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I'm going to read our school committee's statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Leamester Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leamester." Having said that, we'll move to our open forum. If anybody in the audience is planning to record the meeting, please, you know, announce yourself now. Other than Leamester Access TV, we know you are. All right, if anybody would like to come up and address the committee? Would anybody like to address the committee? Please come and state your name and address for the record. And one last and final time, if anyone would like to address the committee, please come forward. With having no one in the audience coming forward, we'll move right on to communications. There are no communications this evening, okay? I did want to report one communication. Wendy Anderson has resigned from the school committee officially. The 30th is her last day. So just to let the public be aware, that's why no one's sitting in that seat. Superintendent's report?
Just one sad note, I just want to make everyone aware. We lost a valued member of our staff here in Leamester Public Schools. Mary Beth Brok, she passed last week a brave, brave battle with brain cancer. Twenty-four years nurse at Leamester High, well-attended her celebration of life. And she will be sadly missed. It definitely is a dent in the forefront of Leamester High. So I want to acknowledge her and send our sympathies to our family and friends who are really struggling. So God bless all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move right on to the finance subcommittee report. The financial funds.
So Finance met at 6 until 7:04. We have three items to approve to close out the year. So we have in front of us a quest to spend an additional $300,145.36 from School Choice to fully pay the fourth quarter health insurance bill. We've already approved spending, in a prior meeting we approved spending up to $2,014,000. I don't remember the numbers after that. Because of extra expenses that have appeared in the expense column being paid out of the general fund that we had hoped to use towards health insurance, we need some additional money from School Choice to cover that bill. The second item is...
Can we take them one by one?
Sure, let's take them one by one.
So why don't you sort of explain this a little more detail? So this is being transferred from the School Choice revolving to insurance?
To pay the bill, yes.
So why is the bill, I mean, where this is...
The fourth quarter bill is 2.9 million.
Right.
Which is, it was slightly higher than anticipated, but pretty close. The main issue is that the plan was, we anticipated having $900,000 left in expenses that we could apply to the bill, and that's why we approved up to $2 million in School Choice to cover the rest. It's turned out we have $600,000 left rather than $900,000 left in expenses. So we're asking to approve an additional $300,000 to cover the rest.
But when we do the budget each year?
Yes.
We appropriate this. We just went through this the other night. We had the money for salaries, but we didn't want to wait until the state budget was passed. So we accelerated the process by adding $400,000 to the mix.
Yes.
So every year, we can pretty much project what our healthcare costs are going to be based on our employees, because the school committee passes a budget that funds X amount of positions. So what you're saying is those positions, there was not enough money in that account to pay for those positions?
So what we're saying is that in last year, we as a school committee voted to spend the appropriation from the city plus School Choice to fund the budget. So there was always a plan to use School Choice money to pay for things that we had, that are in the school system. To make the accounting simple, rather than presenting us with a long laundry item list of, "We're paying this out of School Choice, and this out of School Choice, and this out of School Choice." We simply picked a large-ticket budget item and asked the school committee to put the School Choice to that.
Right.
So it's not that the health insurance amount is dramatically different from what was budgeted. It's simply that the simplest way to do the School Choice spending amount that we planned was to put it all to the fourth quarter health insurance bill.
Right. Let me just back up a second. In order to have a sustainable budget, you have, I mean, our biggest, our biggest expense or cost factor is salary and then benefits.
Correct.
When we do our budget, all of that salary and all of that expense, you know, all of the benefits or whatever, healthcare, whatever it might be, sick leave, buy bad, whatever, are supposed to be already budgeted. When we pass our budget last May 6th, that should be in there.
And it was.
And sufficient revenues to pay for that.
Yes.
But we're transferring money now, a lot of money, to offset the cost of health insurance. So where did the money that we appropriated last year from salary and wages or, you know, X amount of positions? We appropriated money, I remember having this conversation. We appropriated money from the general revenue account to pay for their health insurance.
Yes.
Okay. So where...
So can I answer that?
Sure.
So Dean, your budget was short what we as a school committee approved last year. So what was done this year was they loaded your budget, what you approved for the schools, into Munis. And that was short, it was short by 2 point whatever million, which was the health insurance piece. And to Mike's point, rather than take the $2 million and split it out among each line, we just arbitrarily said we're going to have it all come out of the School Choice would be the health insurance.
No, Susan, that's not what happened. You're trying to trade some history here. We approved, what you asked for last year in the budget is what you got.
Right.
Everything, hold on, hold on. What the school committee requested is what was approved.
That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
What, what? You put in the budget last year is what was approved?
We approved $350,000 left.
Well, we approved, but then there's a difference between what their budget...
Their city approved.
So you have a budget.
Right.
When you hire employees, we talk and talk and talk about sustainable budget. We have employees, you have to have the funds in place. In the budget, there's an assumption that we just passed the budget. The budget that I gave to the city council has X amount of positions and then a line item before we do anything. You can't run the city without employees before we pay for anything. The first thing that's in the budget is salary and wages, and then the expenses that we need to pay these people's benefits. That is the first and the most important piece of building a sustainable budget.
That's not the problem.
That's not the problem?
No, the problem is your budget was short from our approved budget.
For your request.
Correct.
That doesn't give you the authority to overs, to spend outside of those categories. It does not.
How are we going to pay for the health insurance?
You hire, you have sufficient amount of, you hire people, right? We just went through this.
Did you or did you not approve the hiring of the staff that now needs this health insurance?
No, you've got to back up a second. You put in a wish list, you put in a request, you put in a request in your budget.
Correct.
At the end of the day, when you end up with, whatever the budget is, a million, half a million, $200,000 less than what you requested.
Correct.
Just like every other department in the city. Then you go back and you balance out to two areas. This is how many people, based on that, this is how many people I can hire? This is, and when I hire those people, I have to make sure that I can provide them with benefits. That's the first part of building the budget.
I also want to make it clear that it is not like any other city department's budget, because we were the only ones that are short.
No, you're talking about this year's budget.
Correct.
I'm talking about last year's budget.
I just want to make it clear.
Clear what?
That we are short.
You're not short.
Other city departments are not.
They are short.
That is not true.
And where's, all right, why don't you provide me the backup tomorrow where that's not true?
Okay.
All right? Because apparently you don't watch the school, the city council meeting the other night.
I actually did.
Okay, did you not see the other department heads that were there that said that's not true?
Okay, I did it. I'm going to comment, I'm going to comment on that.
We're leaving the argument here. The argument here is, we're not, we're not supposed to be hiring anybody unless we have the benefits set aside.
Dean, we understand that, and I think what Mike was trying to say was that we have the money. We're using School Choice money instead of to pay for, instead of paying for, using School Choice money to pay for 30 other items.
Exactly.
And dividing it up that way, it was easier to use it to pay one big chunk of money instead of putting it into 30 other different places.
Okay. I didn't say you didn't have the money to backfill it. What I'm telling you is it's not a good practice to do that.
So...
All right, hold on. Did we hire new people last year?
Yes.
How many people did we hire?
We'd have to come back with an exact number.
Somebody should be able to tell me how many people we hired last year.
Well, we have, I mean, I don't remember off the top of my head. We have gotten the positions at previous meetings, so I don't have that in front of me to say what it was. But we have a pot of money, School Choice. We could have chosen to spend it on a zillion other items.
That's correct.
And instead of doing that, we made the decision to take that same amount of money we would have spent on a zillion other items and transfer it into health insurance.
Okay, let me just start very basic here. Very ba, very, very basic. Building any kind of a municipal budget, whether at school or municipalities. I have X amount of employees. I'm responsible for their benefits. I need an appropriation to pay for those benefits.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. So apparently we didn't.
No.
No, we did.
You appropriated to pay for those benefits.
Right, out of School Choice.
Okay, so how much are we over?
In which?
We're transferring money tonight.
Yes.
I want to make sure this is very public. How much are we transferring?
We're not over, we're just using it, we're paying our bills.
This is the amount of health insurance. So which? The health insurance bill, fourth quarter health insurance bill is 2.9 million.
Transfer A is from School Choice to revolving insurance.
Yes.
And how much are we transferring?
Tonight, $300,000...
$145.56. Okay. So we did hire new people.
Yes.
Okay, but we don't know how many. One, five?
If I could provide you just one example. We came to you in the fall and told you that we needed to hire two kindergarten teachers and two instruction ladies for those kindergarten classrooms. And that means to pay that out of School Choice. We had sufficient funds, we didn't allocate all of School Choice revenue to supplement the general fund. So tonight, we're at the point where we didn't want to do transfers till the end of the year. We would eventually have to make transfers at the end of the year. So if you have, say, $60,000, $80,000 in salary for two kindergarten teachers, $40,000 in salaries for two instruction ladies, those teachers, and $60,000 to health insurance, rather than transfer that back in October, we're waiting until now to do it. And simply rather put School Choice against each one of those line items in the budget, we're putting it all towards health insurance.
I get that.
Or over-expending other lines.
Okay, I get that. What I'm saying is, in an appropriation, when we hire people, this is what got us in the last mess. I'm not sitting through this again, I took the blame for it last time, not sitting through it. This is what, this is what gets us into it. Because if we, we need School Choice money for something else, when we hire people, we need, under the expense account, not School Choice, under expenses.
Yep.
You can move around, you can transfer, the school committee during the course of the year can transfer from salary and wages to expenses or from expenses back to salary and wages.
Yes.
Okay?
We can also vote to spend School Choice money on school expenses.
I didn't say, I didn't say that you couldn't. What I'm saying is, in the budget, we're talking about building a sustainable budget. In the budget, should be sufficient funds, I can see if you're off $5,000 or $10,000, that happens, right? Should be sufficient funds to cover salary and wages.
Yep.
And the expenses, the expenses to cover those employees.
And we always, any debt was there. We made sure that there was money there, and we do have the money.
But now we're transferring School Choice money?
Yes.
To that account.
Yep.
Right, but that's just, I mean, it was just for accounting simplicity.
We could put it towards textbooks, or we could put it towards insurance.
Hold on. No, I mean, this is, no, I understand your point, Dean. But I'm saying, we did budget, you appropriated, we budgeted, you appropriated for the salaries and for their benefits. We also, we voted as a school committee last year that because our increase in net school spending was so small last year, that we were going to need to spend our School Choice money on school expenses this year. So we had already voted that we were going to use this money to pay for things so we could get through the year.
Okay.
So now, let me finish.
Go ahead.
So we could have come to the school committee, they could have come to us over and over again through the year, "This expense, let's pay it through School Choice. This expense, let's pay it through School Choice." Because we have to approve the details of the big picture thing that we'd approved last May. Instead, they said, "Let's just put it all towards one item so it becomes one vote." It's turned into two because of some unanticipated expenses in the, in the last month. Because the number we thought we would need last time didn't turn out to be the right number. It's not that we have more, more benefits than was budgeted. It's that this is how we chose to spend the School Choice money to make it simple.
Okay, and I'm saying, this is what is going to make us unsustainable. And I'm just saying for the record, my feeling, I'm just fear, I'm in fear here.
Yep, I understand.
And I hope you understand.
I do understand.
I'm in fear that we're going to run into another situation like this. Nobody's going to raise their hand and say, "I want to share the blame." The blame's going to be put back on me again, and I'm going to have to deal with this.
Sure, Dean.
Okay, and that's my rec, that's my statement on the record.
This is why we should all be advocating so strongly, you know, state to fix the foundation budget for me.
Yes, yes.
So then it becomes not a problem.
So I want to go on record as, as asking, A, how many people did we hire last year?
Okay.
Two, I want to make sure that there are sufficient funds for how many ever people we hire to cover in the expense part of this year's budget.
Yes.
That we have salary for, if we have, we, one of the issues that superintendent didn't want to hire the other 13 people is making sure that we had sufficient...
Yes.
I'm fine, she didn't want to wait, we felt we might lose some good candidates, okay, that's fine. So we infused $400,000 into that part of the budget. I just want to make sure, I'm assured, that there are sufficient funds to pay for all of these salaries, everybody in the system, okay? And also, not from the other funds, but from our expense account, that there's enough to pay for their insurance and other benefits.
And I believe our superintendent is doing a good job making sure that we are not deficit spending and that we have the money to cover all employees' benefits that are higher.
Okay, I just want somebody to tell me that, and I want it on the record, that there's sufficient funds to cover that.
There are sufficient funds. We're going to close out this budget, nice and easy. There is no deficit spending, none.
You've been working with the municipal, doing a good job. I hope you understand what I'm trying to say here.
No, I understand your concern, yep.
In the event that our School Choice revolving funds are not sufficient, and we need them for something else.
For next year or this year?
Whenever. And we're relying on the fact that that is going to be our fund to pay for health insurance or whatever, and that we don't get that. Last time, we were hiring people, we didn't have the money to hire.
Right.
But we've been very cautious this year, and every position has been brought before the committee, and we have asked the superintendent every single time whether we had sufficient funds to pay for their salaries and benefits. So we have been very fiscally responsible this year. I understand that you don't like how we may have chosen to divvy it up, but we knew that we would be using School Choice funds this year, we're not talking about the upcoming budget, this year, to pay for things. And they felt that it was easier to pay for something in one lump sum than to pay for many things continuously throughout the year. So that's our understanding.
In, in our practice on the city side, when, if we were to create a new position, that seldom happens. We, we go to the city council and they vote on that, but they also approve the funds. So in other words, I'm going to hire somebody for a half a year, it's a part-time position, it's $7,000. There's a communication from myself to the city council that says, "A transfer from, whatever, to hire somebody, not a full-time person, not permanently, for..."
Right, and which is what we did.
Excuse me, excuse me, for the next three months, four months, five months. And then, so what we're doing is we're transferring that money to make sure that that position is funded and what the terms of that position are. That happens immediately. And I understand you wanted to wait, but it's, I think it's just much safer that we do this according to each person.
Right, no, our new administration has been doing an excellent job of monitoring and making sure that, being on top of not just adding people without being able to pay for it. It's not that we wait, we didn't, we didn't wait to decide whether we could afford or how to pay for the benefits. It's just, this is an accounting thing.
Okay, and my only recommendation is...
And we have to continue, you're right. There is a difference though, of course, because a student can move in at any point with an IUP that says, "You have to have an aide."
I get it.
And boom, we have to hire them, like, we don't have a choice, it's state required.
Right.
We still, we're getting reports on those, we do have to manage that, and that does cause...
And we still have to...
Causes some accounting issues.
And the school committee still has to vote and transfer whatever funds come from wherever for that position. We should just do that. You know what I'm saying? In other words, each time it happens, we should do it. So that's a public vote, so there's total transparency. And we're voting on the position, saying that, A, we're hiring this person because we have to, though I don't think anybody's disagreeing, and we have the funding source, not only for their salary, but also for their, you know, their benefits. And I think that's how we do it. And I go down to the council every single time, it's a part-time job, temporary, whatever it might be, and there's always a record of how many people we're hiring. Now, the insurance people on the other end, if it's a full-time job, doesn't happen, I can't even think the last time it happened. There's a record, because it's part of the public record, where they see it, and they know a new employee's coming in. And they sort of watch the overall, you know, expense side to make sure there's sufficient funds, so there's sufficient funds in the expenses to cover the insurance.
Right, and I think we understand what you're saying. I do think that we have been, the superintendent has brought forth every month, you know, who's been hired, who's been let going, who replaced who. So we have had an up-to-date communication of that monthly. Not because they, I'm not a numbers person, so I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but we have, that has come before us.
And that's been in your packet all, all the time.
And we've had an H&R, HR.
I don't know if somebody's replaced or not, it doesn't matter. And what I'm saying is, the only way to be 100% open and transparent so that everybody knows, the school committee took, took an action. What was the action? We just transferred funds, saying we have sufficient funds to cover that person's position, and if there are any benefits at all, then those benefits are covered as well.
And I think we have sufficient funds, we just chose to pool things from different places, which you don't agree with, and I, we get that.
Right.
But we still had sufficient funds. We didn't hire anybody that we didn't have sufficient funds. So it's just the way we're going about it, and we understand that, that's not what you would have done. It's what we've done this year.
Wait, hold on, wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa. We're not talking, I made this, we're not talking this, I made this all up.
No, the health, nobody said you made it all up.
I'm talking, this is good fiscal management.
I know, but the health insurance is a quarterly bill, so you can't take every month, put money aside for, you have, you have a quarterly bill, it's, we govern, we pay that quarterly, through the city, I believe.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Right, we know what your bill, we know what your bill's going to be.
Right, so you're, right.
We already know.
Right, exactly.
When we vote on the budget, we're voting saying there are sufficient funds. Not using these other funds, School Choice and all these things, we, we don't know what we're going to use for school. We're voting on that, saying, "Well, we hired somebody, we have the funds right now to commit to them for the rest of the year."
Right, and that's what we did, so.
Okay, if you want to keep, you can keep doing that as long as you want. I'm going to come in with a written policy, it'll be my recommendation, you could vote it up or down, but at least I took some action. And I think it's, I do it with the city council, it causes an official record, not just an update that this is the people we hired or who left or whatever, but an official record that we just hired somebody, and here are the necessary funds, whatever they might be, to pay for it. And then the school committee can vote on each one and either decide that that's a good mechanism to fund these positions or the benefits, or not.
So at this point, Mike, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve spending $300,145.36 from School Choice in addition to what was already approved to pay the fourth quarter health insurance bill.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. Do you have another item you'd like to address?
Yep, we have two more. In order to balance out the year, we have a proposal to spend up to $239,000 of School Choice on FY19 general fund expenses. That would be all the rest of our School Choice, other than a few dollars. Currently, we expect that, what'd you say, Melanie, 55,000, oh, she's gone. 55,000 of that, as of today, 55,000 of that 239 is not needed. However, should a bill appear tomorrow, this would enable them to pay it. Assuming the bill doesn't appear tomorrow, the extra would stay in our School Choice for next year. I would move that we approve that.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Cody, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
And can I also recommend that we set up a, some sort of a revolving account or a, I guess I'd call it a reserve account for special ed? Because we don't know exactly what that amount might be. If, if this year, our salary and wages, right, are in the budget, and we're all set, everybody we're hiring is coming through the door, is all set, and we also have, on the expense side, enough to pay their benefits. Which is going to lead me to believe that we're going to have some School Choice money to spend on other things that are, that are student-related, right? That are, right? So I would suggest that we put some money aside out of our budget here.
Out of your School Choice money, or out of where?
Out of School Choice money, or whatever, so that we have a...
Because I don't know how much, where money we could take from other areas. So that's what I'm asking.
Well, we're not going to have to take money from other areas, because we're not going to have to transfer $300,000 into insurance next year, because it's already in the budget. Right, Glenn? I mean, we shouldn't be at the end of the year transferring to insurance. 50,000, 60,000, of course.
I understand everything the mayor is recommending and the way he do it in the city council. Whenever they have additional costs that's not included in the city department's general fund budget, they designate where that funds, where that expense we pay. The excess and deficiency, free cash, sewer revolving, cemetery revolving, they make that designation. The school department basically has two financial resources at your disposal during the year. A circuit breaker, to pay for special ed-related expenses.
Yep.
And School Choice. And then we go to the mayor and ask, "Do we need funds from free cash or excess and deficiencies?" We should be very supportive of this issue. Credit needs to go, the city council and mayor have been very supportive this year. But if we're going to do, every time we vote to hire a new person, a new professional, I'm not sure how efficient that's going to be.
That changes daily.
For a circuit breaker.
But if you're hiring brand-new people, new positions, you should come to the school committee. So that, that way, in the, in the end, we don't find out, you know, through just conversation, "Well, we gave you a list," and through conversation, "We hired 30 new people, now it's 2021, and we can't afford those people, and now we're going to send out a bunch of..." That's exactly, Glenn, what happened last time.
Well, that's not what happened this year, under this management.
It's not what we're doing.
Okay.
It would make sense to come back for the board every time we have a new tuition to get that approved.
Glenn, I'll even take it another step. We're not, when, when we, we might move somebody from position to position, we move salary and wages. Transfer salary and wages to salary and wages. Because maybe somebody got promoted or something, and we actually go to that, so there's an official, public record of an action taken by the mayor and the city council. That's all I'm suggesting, it's the cleanest way to do it. I think every, most everybody I know does it that way.
So at this point, we have a motion? And do we have a second?
Cody, second.
I'm sorry, oh, Cody, second, I'm sorry. Oh, we have already approved, we've approved two motions.
That's right, yeah, so we're on the third.
So we're on the third one.
Sorry. Got distracted. Yes, so the third is to transfer $912,000 from the general fund expense side to the general fund salary side to close those both out with zero, nearly zero balances.
Do we have a second?
Hold on, well, go ahead, second, and then I have a question.
And then, comment? Do you?
So...
Uh, Nona?
So, we're transferring nine hundred and twelve thousand from the general fund expenses?
Yep.
Weren't those, wouldn't that, those expenses be sufficient to cover the insurance?
If we chose to do that. Yeah, we could do it that way.
But we chose not to.
That's, that's my point.
So you, you had...
So we had the money, we chose to do it a different way.
That's my point, is, is it's, it's not that we didn't have enough money to pay the health insurance bill. We had the expenses covered in the budget, it's just was a simple accounting measure to say, let's spend our two point three million of school choice in one bucket, instead of having a long list in front of you, where we're spending a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here. In the end, it's the same amount of money. We're, we're covering our expenses and spending our school choice, and this page is fairly simple, because it can be done in three transactions this way, versus a long list of transactions. It is not that we have a, a cost overrun in health insurance. We have a two point nine million dollar bill, which was like four thousand dollars higher than last quarter, or something. I don't remember the exact number, but it was, it was very, very close. We estimated two point eight eight six, oh, it's this one, yeah. We estimated like two point eight eight six, and we got two point nine nine one. Yeah. So it's just a question of, I mean, it's just, it was simple this way. So...
So we have a motion and a second?
So the first two, so the first two, the first two motions that we've approved have created enough extra in expenses to cover this transfer, so as to cover the shortfall in salaries.
Okay. So you had nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars in your expense account?
It's seven fifty as of today, seven hundred fifty thousand, but we just trans, we just voted to spend two hundred and thirty-nine, up to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand of school choice on expenses. So, that will enable us to have nine hundred and twelve thousand available to transfer to the salary side.
You had nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars in, in the expense account?
Mm-hmm.
In the expense account are employees of the school department's healthcare.
Yeah.
So you ran three hundred thousand dollars short on the healthcare?
No.
No.
Not at all.
You already approved it.
You, you just change, you just transferred this from school choice revolving to insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, but it's not because we were short.
But that's not because we're short on health insurance.
Glenn, could I ask you a question, please?
Okay.
Were there nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars in the general fund expenses, fund, in the expense budget?
We, we utilized school choice money to supplement the general fund expense account. Those were the actions that we're taking, a priming hit of two point four million dollars.
So, are you saying that from the two million, three hundred of it went to, to health insurance, and the other nine hundred and twelve thousand is gonna go into salaries?
It all went down. What you see on that bill that Michael has, can I show him that bill?
I think he, did you get a copy of this, too?
So...
To pay the two point nine billion dollars to health insurance.
This is what it sounds like, maybe it's just confusing, just...
Well, so, there may be a piece of information we're missing.
Alright.
We cannot actually transfer from school choice into the general fund. We can vote to spend school choice on bills, which then don't have to be paid out of the general fund. Alright? So we're not actually putting three hundred thousand dollars of school choice into the general fund, we're spending three hundred thousand dollars of school choice on the health insurance bill, which frees up three hundred thousand dollars in the general expense fund.
But you have nine hundred and twelve thousand in the expense...
We have seven hundred and fifty thousand today.
In the expense account.
We have seven hundred and fifty thousand today.
Why didn't you pay the, the healthcare bill out of that?
Because we voted to pay for it out of school choice. Why would we pay it twice?
Salary and wages, expenses, which includes benefits.
Yes.
So...
There was enough money to do that.
And you didn't.
We chose to...
We chose to spend the school choice money that way to make it simple. It's not, it's not because there wasn't enough.
I just heard from the other side, there wasn't, that we didn't properly fund this.
No.
Oh.
Well, it is true that the appropriation we got last year was three hundred and fifty thousand less in expenses than what we voted for as the school. That's not a huge amount, but that's three hundred and fifty thousand, which plays a role in this. And we knew that we could cover that, because we had also voted to apply school choice, and we knew that the superintendent would be very careful about new hires, um, and so we've made it to the end of the year, able to balance our budgets. We have, we do these three things, and we've done the first two.
Right, right. I got all that.
Okay.
I understand.
Right.
Everything that's going over here.
It seems to me the buildup is effectively semantic, right? We could, you're right, we could simply have paid two million of the health insurance budget out of school choice, and the remaining nine hundred thousand out of the expense line, and then we would have a list of nine hundred thousand dollars' worth of things that we've already spent out of the general fund that we would be spending out of school choice.
Okay.
The end result is the same, but now it's a long list of items instead of three lines.
The school committee just took a vote?
Yes.
We took a vote to transfer three hundred thousand dollars from our school choice funds to pay health insurance.
Yes.
That was the first action.
To pay a bill.
To pay a bill.
Not to put it into...
Right, that doesn't actually go into the general fund.
It says...
It doesn't go in the general fund. It's to pay a bill.
I know, it's, it's, we need to work on this document, because we can't actually transfer.
Hold on, we took an action, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, we took an action.
We took an action, and we said, we're gonna use school choice money to pay the fourth quarter health insurance, which is higher, and it's three hundred thousand dollars. Okay? That was the action. That's what we did. Now...
But it's not because the health insurance bill is higher.
I didn't say it was.
Okay, you just, you said higher, I wanted to clarify that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
I just wanted to make sure people understand correctly. The bill is two point nine million, which is what we expected.
Yes, right.
But we are spending two point four million of school choice towards that, rather than two point one million of school choice.
So, one would, if anybody's watching this, one would think that there was three hundred thousand dollars less in our expense account to pay the health insurance bill.
I think we've been trying to be clear that it wasn't...
No, that freed up three hundred thousand more to transfer to the wages and salary side, to clear up...
The first action is to transfer, to pay a bill?
Yep.
That was supposed to be paid out of the expense account, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Then I moved to two, two actions later.
Well, it's not supposed to be, we chose to not to, right?
Your health insurance and your, it should be part of your budgeted expense...
It was.
That we pay for. Okay.
And it was.
Well, apparently, there was three hundred thousand dollars less.
No, there wasn't.
No, there wasn't. There wasn't.
It says it right here.
If I can just try and simplify.
Yes, please.
Three major sources of revenue the school department has access to.
Yes.
The general fund appropriation by the city council, school choice receipts for students that come from other districts that we get to pay for, and circuit breakers we use to pay for, spend tuitions. What the actions being proposed tonight are doing is to designate the school choice money to pay for something that benefits all students. That's the intent of school choice, right? It's to using it to pay for health insurance for the employees that service all the kids in the spaces.
Okay.
And that's what's being proposed tonight.
Read this to me, please, so that I don't think I'm on my mind. Transfer C. We're taking, after we just did all that, we're basically telling the public that we had nine hundred twelve thousand dollars from the general fund expenses, and we're gonna move it over to general fund salaries. That's what we're telling them.
That's what you're saying, but what you intend is...
Yes, because we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general fund expense line today.
Then why didn't you pay the health insurance bill?
Because it's bigger than that. We did pay the health insurance bill.
We requested an additional three hundred thousand one forty-five thirty-six to pay the fourth quarter insurance bill.
Yep.
That should come out of the expense account.
Sure, we could do that, and then we have to put another line in here explaining how we're gonna, what, what was currently coming out of expenses that's gonna be paid for by school choice.
Okay.
It doesn't change anything.
It's the same amount.
How does it change things?
Because the public watches this and thinks that we just used some other money to pay an insurance bill that should've come out of general expenses.
I think I've explained it multiple times.
And now it looks like we had nine hundred twelve thousand dollars.
Right.
Because we shared, yeah, yeah. I think I've explained this pretty well, but I can try again.
Oh, Cody, isn't this rather inconvenient?
Point of order!
Isn't this rather inconvenient? Okay? That somehow or another, I'm asking a question, a simple question, that makes it look like the public's sitting home watching TV, right? And we just spent money from somewhere else.
Your turn to defend the public.
Something that should've been...
That you did something wrong.
So, Dean, we, we, we...
It's right here. It's right here.
So we did something wrong?
So you made your point, we understand that you don't agree with the decision we made. However, I think we've explained it numerous times, that we had the money, we just chose to spend it out of different pockets, but in the end, all that money would've been spent, and we are within our budget, and we have maintained our budget, we don't have any deficit spent.
Okay. For the record, item A, just for the record, so we can end this, item A transfers three hundred and one hun, three hundred thousand one forty-five thirty-six out of school choice to put it in, to pay a health insurance bill. That should've been paid by expenses.
So, that's, that's, no, but no.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
No, because as you're saying that, yes, it could've been paid from expenses. We had the money in expenses. We chose to take it out of a different pocket of money, but we still had the money.
And we voted at another, at a previous meeting...
And we voted at another meeting to do that.
To do that.
Okay. Let me try, it's just...
Which you were, well, I would assume you're at, but you might've missed it.
Can I have the floor for just a minute? We can end this. For the record, transfer A, school choice revolving to insurance.
Three hundred and one, three hundred thousand one hundred and forty-five thirty-six went from school choice to pay a health insurance bill.
Typically, under municipal finance, whether it's city or schools, health insurance is in part of the expenses. Okay? Two appropriations later, we're transferring nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the same account where the insurance should be, to another account. That's my mo, that's, that's my, my statement to the record.
Right. And I think you've made that very clear.
Thank you.
Can we move on and do the third?
Yes. So, I move that we approve this, uh, transfer, so that we will, uh, balance out the accounts for the end of the year.
Okay. Do I have a second? Cody? Um, all those in favor?
There'll be a name.
Okay, motion carries with one objection.
It'll be a name, only because...
And to, and to... We didn't have discussion either. Well, we did, I'm sorry. Dean, I didn't hear that you wanted to...
I, no, I, I wanted to clarify, 'cause I opposed it at the finance committee meeting as well. Um, I, and it's funny, sitting here now, more information came out that wasn't available before at our finance meeting, about the seven hundred and fifty thousand. I can't cautiously vote on this, because I don't have a document in front of me that supports the numbers.
Melanie told it to seven hundred fifty thousand at finance.
Well, she told us, and, and you said it, and, and that clicked, but I, you know, these are large amounts of money, and I think we should have a document in front of us, 'cause my concern was, I was afraid we were deficit spending. So that's why I opposed it, I don't have a document in front of me.
Okay.
So, for the record...
So, two objections, but the motion carries. Right. Anything else, Mike?
Can we get a breakdown still of what that money went to, Susan?
What?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you have an objection to that.
If you're on the conservative, you're, you're a world, country, various dollars...
Listen, my fear is that we're gonna get ourselves in trouble.
No, I understand your fear.
Okay?
It's important that we pay our bills for this year, and not end in deficit, right?
A, I am thrilled we have money to pay our bills. I am thrilled.
And these three things, these three moves take care of that, so...
But I've been at this a long time.
I understand.
And I understand budgets. And, and, and I said this last time before it happened, and I got the same thing. I don't know what it's talking about, just trying to create, the, the, and then the crisis, and I'm all alone. I'm looking to my left, I'm looking to my right, nobody's around, nobody raised their hand and said, hey, mayor, we, you're right, you were right, you told us, you know, we, we're doing this wrong, we, we had a better way to do it. That's all. I just wanna look to my right and left and see somebody with their hand up.
So at this point, we need to move on, because I think we've, uh, said it to...
No, nothing, or shall I wait till new business? I just, I, I would like, if Chris can go back in the minutes and see when we voted to pay for health insurance out of school choice?
May sixth.
It was May sixth. And everybody was here, except Wendy.
Yes, correct. And it says, Michael Stassen made a motion to spend up to two million and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five on the school choice account to pay for the fourth quarter health insurance bill. Seconded by Nona Ojala, motion carried eight and zero.
And Wendy, and the person that was absent was Wendy?
Yes, Chris.
Right.
So everybody here voted on that?
So you had voted on that at that time, Dean?
Oh, absolutely, it's May sixth. What are we gonna do, not pay these people? I wanna know, how many new people did we hire? Whether we was, had to hire them or what? I just wanna know.
Nothing to do with who hired.
It had nothing to do with who hired, that's how they chose to pay.
But did we hire new people?
We did.
But nobody here can tell me how many?
Right, not off the top of my head, and be accurate. But we certainly can get that number to you, Dean, because we certainly have that number, and I know we've provided that number.
Did we hire five people?
But it doesn't matter, because we had the money to hire them, that's not, that's not what's causing this issue. What's causing this issue is how we chose to pay it. And, and we, do we note that you don't agree with that decision? So moving forward-
Wait, okay, then you just brought up a good point. If we had sufficient funds, then why are we transferring 912,000 to the salary account? You just said, everybody we hired, we had the money to pay for. So you didn't have the money to pay for it? In your gen, in your, out of salary and wages? You didn't.
So, Dean, 912,000 is from expenses to salary. Remember, that's in the general fund.
We had the money.
That's in the general fund.
It's in expenses, and we moved it to salaries, so we had the money to pay.
So that's general fund. That's within, you know, that's within the realm of typical business.
We just passed the budget, the, May 6th of this year, right?
Yep.
I wanna be comfortable that, in that budget, every single position is funded through that line item. Then I also wanna look over to expenses, and know that their benefits are also covered under that. That's what I'm saying. Now, things happen towards the end of the year, yes, but I wanna be sure, as we start another fiscal year, that those two answers, those two questions are answered with a yes. We have enough to pay, everybody we're hiring, we have enough in our expense account to hire, to pay for their benefits. That's what I wanna be assured of.
Okay, and, and at this point in time, as to our knowledge, yes, we do. Given what we're starting with. All right, so, moving on, action items, we need to vote on surplus equipment. Superintendent?
Yes, we have a memo from our facilities director. One of them are about obsolete television sets, that are just getting stacked up, most, they're broken, they're a little dangerous to have around in the classrooms, they tip, and we don't want a problem there.
They're seriously, they don't want to.
They're very, very heavy. So, we have a surplus there. And we also have a playground structure over at Northwest, there's protruding metal, and that's very, very old.
From the Francis Street.
It's time, oh, I'm sorry, Francis Street. So, it's time to get that out of there, so we're just hoping you'll approve three of those items.
Could I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to dispose of the TVs and the playground, and Francis Street.
Could I have a second?
I'll start it.
Ron? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed, it all carries. We'll move on to new and old business. I wanted to bring up the MASC conference. We should have all gotten something in the mail.
Yep.
And our early bird registration, obviously, is cheaper. And then we wait to, the last minute, and it has to be, I think, put in for by July 15th or something. So, I don't know if anybody here knows, if they are planning to go. I am. Ron is? On Nona?
I'm possibly. I'd say yes, if it's the same situation we had.
I'd like to go. While I'm teaching my classes.
Right, so you're not able to go?
I think so, I'll double check, but I, I expect I'm not gonna be able to.
Sue?
I'll start.
Who can? Okay. So, at this point, we have three definites with possibly, a couple more additions.